We're calling this meeting back to order. Item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent, can you please guide us?
Yes, please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the planet of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 4.2, Broadcast Statement. Student Member McCarthy.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety, and it will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consulate Communication, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Friday, November 4th at 6:00 PM and Monday, November 7th, 6:00 PM. It will also be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable's 14 YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do have a comment on the item, on an item that is on the agenda, we ask that you please defer your comment until the item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you. All right, item 4.3, Students' Stella Nina Yang is a second-grade student from Pacific Elementary and will be introduced tonight by Vice President Garcia. Nina, would you like to come up to the podium as we've... She can come right up here and we're gonna... Member Garcia is going to read something.
Hi Nina, I get the privilege of just introducing you today because Board Member Phillips is not with us, but I just want to say that Nina is a standout student and a good representative of her peers. She brings positive energy to whatever space she is in. Nina exudes joy in all her endeavors while encompassing integrity. She rises to the occasion with excitement and encourages her peers to do the same. That is why both Pacific Principal Dr. Bridges and the manager of the Expanded Learning Program have nominated Nina Yang as stellar student. And Nina, would you like to say a few words?
No? No. Okay. All right, we're gonna come down there and take a picture with you. All right. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Bridget. There are two announcements that will be given by the Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I have two announcements that I'm very excited to make. By a vote of five to zero with Board Members Phillips and Garcia absent, the board this evening approved the appointment of Ms. Celeste White as Principal of John Bidwell Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. White. And the second announcement is that by a vote of five to zero with Board Members Phillips and Garcia absent, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Yvonne Wright as SacCity Unified's new Chief Academic Officer. Congratulations, Mrs. Wright.
All right. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption.
Madam President, we have a public comment, Terrence Gladney, on closed session.
Okay. Hi, Terrence.
There we go. Good evening. Regarding the Chief Academic Officer and its importance to our entire infrastructure, I reflect back to an LCAP meeting where we were told about all of these changes that were being made to that department around MTSS and obviously the removal of Behavioral Intervention Specialists from the school site. And I question how do we have this restructuring without someone to lead that specific department? And to that point, I would ask, or I would hope, that the new CAO would make a statement to the community, students, families, about what the vision is for that department, so we can hopefully know whether there was a selection based on where we are right now and where we were already planning to go, or if there's a new vision in place and we hired the best person and we're vulnerable enough to say that maybe where we're going isn't the right place and we brought in someone who may have a difference of opinion, because I think that that's what our students deserve and that's what our community expects, is that we have the best people in place, whether it's on the dais or in staff, and not be afraid to say that we're wrong and that we need to redirect even if we've committed a certain number of resources, time, or effort in a specific direction, because, again, that's what we deserve. So I would hope for that and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking back to Agenda Adoption. Can I get a motion? Motion a second. All in favor, say aye. All right.
Madam President, Terrence Gladney had signed up for...
On Agenda Adoption? Okay. Hi, Terrence.
Hopefully this is real quick. I've come before you guys before, just requesting, hopefully, the development, implementation of some mechanism by which the community can be assured that questions posed in this forum will go, will not go unanswered and instead will be acknowledged and addressed and answered fully. I haven't seen that, although I've been reassured that that would be forthcoming. Again, we have previously had such a space through the district website where all questions posed here were answered for full transparency. I guess additional suggestions I would have if that is not the path we decide to take. You know, I've looked at some of the board meeting minutes, and while I understand that they are to be scrubbed for, you know, to be succinct, I don't know that they capture all the time the full intent or nature of public comment or even board comment. And if that's not the space to provide additional clarification, I would ask that you guys will reference fully a board recording. With the cloud being available now, I know that we eventually do archive the meetings, but if there was a cloud space to which you could link and reference specific board comments in a recording, I think that that would be very helpful and beneficial. And I just, you know, again, I personally have posed a number of questions that have gone unanswered. I know that there's others that, you know, don't come to this space. We've experienced the same thing in different district committee spaces. And again, if our goal is to be better, we have to be transparent and vulnerable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.0, Public Comment.
Yes, first up, we have Alex Gomez Cuayo, followed by Rich Vasquez and Damian Harmony.
Didn't know I was gonna be first. Wow, okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, hello. So, I just wanted to start off by saying this is my second time coming to speak with you guys. I was here a few years ago when you guys helped us out with the new stadium, and that's been awesome so far. I see some familiar faces, especially Liam. So I want to say thank you before I started off. We're already seeing increases in participation in PE, study hall, excitement on campus. We feel like our sports teams are doing better, especially me being the football coach, feel like we're doing, you know, better because of that. Obviously, kids are excited to have a field like that. With this little bit of success that we've been finding now, though, some issues that we didn't know would arise have arisen, is that a word? I don't know. The small school agreement is, two of the last three years, we've won our league championship, and one year, we went nine and one and actually didn't even make the playoffs. But each year that we've had these good seasons, we have a D4 enrollment, we play in a D4 league, we are forced to play in D1. So tomorrow night, we're gonna go play Elk Grove, one of the top programs in the area, because we have a D1 enrollment due to the small school agreement. We have over 500 kids added to our enrollment at Hiram Johnson. We have literally zero students on our varsity roster from the small school agreement. So while we have 1670, 1671 kids to pull from on campus, when the CIF puts us forward for playoffs, we're slotted at 2,500. Okay. That just puts us at a competitive disadvantage for just about any school that we'll face when it comes to the section playoffs. That's why I'm here today. I do know that you guys are working hard for us, and we've seen the work and we appreciate it, but this is something that's come with the help that you guys have given us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vasquez, bless you. Vasquez, good evening.
Hello. Again, Rich Vasquez at Hiram Johnson, got a senior over there. Wanted to talk about that small school agreement policy. We've been there four years. This is only the second time we'll be in the Sacqueen Section Tournament, you know, so that's pretty big. And again, when we talk about that enrollment, it adds us, and CIF ain't gonna care. And then when I'm asking them about how many kids are coming to our school to play, it's like 10. That's crazy to add all this and put all that extra pressure on our school side or not even be competitive. Like, we're gonna go give it our all, and I know they're gonna fight, and we're gonna try our best, but you know, when you know these schools are championship-bred teams for years over years, I mean, we're just barely getting, we barely got a stadium. These schools are already way past us, so I don't know how we, this just needs to stop overall, right? Again, we can't put our whole school community and the successes of our school and our student athletes. Again, it's hard over at Johnson. Our academics let us thrive in sports at least. Coming, we're making movement there, so I don't know how we're having 10 kids. I know, I don't even know where they're at, honestly, right? He said they're not on the football team. What teams are they playing for then? I mean, again, it's tearing up the school, what we could be experiencing. And again, also for these small schools, I think they're creating a coed league for themselves. That's pretty crazy that we opened our doors, hey, come over here and play sports for, and then again, the small schools, where are they? Are they located near our school? So now you want these kids driving all the way over there, you know, it's only 10 kids. So, sorry, and again, in the beginning, I thought, oh, that was a cool thing to do. Yeah, let them play, but now that you, look how it affects, even last year, I didn't realize that we're going out to Whitney for the volleyball, the girls went to Laguna Creek, these are all D1 schools. I didn't even realize that I should have been over here last year telling you this stuff. Again, so I hope that stuff gets cleaned up and I hope you guys fix it. I had another thing, the open enrollment. Four years ago, my kid got into West Campus, you know, I didn't know what was going on. I'm just, I'm trying to give my kid the best opportunity, but now, after the experience, why do we allow kids that didn't even come through the district into West Campus? They go to private schools and all of a sudden, they're at West Campus. Those should be reserved for our kids, like, right? It's our school. That's crazy that my kid didn't get in, but some kid coming from wherever they're coming from, not even the neighborhood, my kid didn't get in, so you split our kids, split my family up. So, you know, start thinking about that. It ain't just a free-for-all and everyone else who wants, it's crazy, the stuff that goes on at West Campus with enrollment. Thank you.
Mr. Vasquez. Mr. Harmony?
I'm Damian Harmony, teacher at John F. Kennedy High School. I actually came here to talk to you about textbooks, and then I saw that it's on item nine, so I'll speak then as well. Came here to tell you that we have a world history textbook that we're currently using, that I used when I student taught 20 years ago, CK McClatchy. Luckily, nothing has happened in the last 20 years that history would need to cover in a textbook, so I think we're good there. So, good planning. We also have geography textbooks that are older than my juniors and seven other countries. We have really old French textbooks, but those textbooks mention Franks as currency, they mention disco texts, they mentioned cassette tapes as modern items of culture. But since you're starving our language programs, don't worry, because the French program will die before you actually need to replace those books. Same with the Latin program. So when you say that everyone has the books they need, I'm curious as to what that means. On the way over, I got a phone call from Smaug from Mount Doom. He's embarrassed for you. That's a reference from The Hobbit. I wouldn't recommend that you go looking for it in any of our school libraries, because we don't replace those either. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Heath.
Next up, Summer Lowry, followed by Charles Bennett, then Kendra Nicole, sorry, I can't read the last name. You win, maybe?
Come on up.
Hello, thank you for giving me a chance to share. My name is Summer Lowry. I'm with Growth Public School in Rosemont. We're an independent charter school with SacCity Unified, obviously. Just wanted to share about some fun things that are going on at our school site. October was a very busy month. We're big on community events. We had a fun run, which was a huge fundraiser. We are in an office park, so we're developing our play area, and we were able to raise funds for play area equipment and had a lot of family participation and families that come out, make signs, cheer the kids on, a lot of positivity. We had our student showcase, which we haven't been able to have a student showcase since pre-COVID, so it was very exciting for our team and our staff to get the families back in the building, to share about what goes on in the classrooms, do community-building activities in the classrooms with the teachers and the classes. So that was a huge success. And then we also had our fall celebration and Spirit Week, where families showed up for a trunk-or-treat. We had community ofrendas, which the kids were able to bring photos of their loved ones and contribute to that, and also games and just some other fun things. So it was great to get together as a community and just see people smiling, bonding, building relationships again after such a long wait on that. November's gonna be busy, too. We just started map testing, so hopefully soon we'll be able to share some positive results from that. And we've got an open house coming up for prospective kindergarteners this weekend, and also Verge Art is coming to our school this month to help us do a collaborative art installation in our cafeteria. So they'll be doing that and planning that with the first through sixth grade students. So that's all we wanted to share for now. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Charles Bennett. I'm a current law student at McGeorge Law School and a former high school science teacher. I have two recommendations for future business for the board. I believe it was in April of 2019 that the board adopted Resolution Number 3076 to support climate action in schools. I was looking through this resolution and I noticed that it focuses mainly on mitigation measures, but as we all know, we are currently suffering impacts of climate change, and the focus in California's Climate Action Plan is towards adaptation. So to that end, I suggest that the board consider revisiting the resolution, focusing on adaptation as well as mitigation. And a related topic, the district has many academic academies and career pathways, and I would like to see the district consider the possibility of Climate Action Adaptation Academy, or maybe developing a focus in current academies towards adaptation strategies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Kendra Nickelway, and I am a parent. I have a kindergartner in the school district, and I have a child who will turn four in mid-April of 2023. He misses the April 2 TK cutoff by about two weeks. He already has an IEP through the school district, and my daughter went through the TK program, and I really, really think it would be a great benefit for my son to also have that experience. I know that the education code at Title II, Division IV, Part 27, Chapter 1, Section 4800 allows for school districts to let kids who miss the cutoff go to TK. So I know that it's possible for that to happen. I sent some emails, hopefully preparing the board for this question, so that maybe someone would have an answer for me. I want to know if there's a system to get waivers for kids who miss the cutoff, and I want to know if there is not a system for this, why not? Because I know that some programs are under-enrolled. If I had an age-qualifying kid, I could put them in a Tahoe TK program right now. So we have empty seats where students could be benefiting from the awesome TK education that the school district has to offer. And I've heard the issue of funding come up. I am confused about that and why that's an issue, because especially if there are unfilled classrooms, the majority of the cost is covered, right? Like, you have the space and you have the teacher, and you're filling a seat with a kid who will then go to the school and continue enrollment for the school district. And from what I can tell, I'm not an expert, but from looking at the actual code, it looks like for average daily attendance, these kids aren't counted anyway until their second year in kindergarten or after being in a TK program. So as far as I can tell, it would actually increase funding for schools to let these kids into TK.
Thank you. Do you want to drop up real quick?
I would love if anybody actually had an answer for me.
You can't answer from the dais, but please reach out to us. And I know you had said you had emailed me. I don't recall getting an email from you, but I will double-check in my spam folder to make sure that it did not go there.
Okay. I believe I emailed the chair, and I know I emailed Ms. Massey. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speakers.
Next is Mary Nickel, and then Taylor Kayata.
Hi, I'm Mary Nickelway. I want to reiterate what Kendra said about the TK program, and I hope that you all will be able to give us an appropriate answer soon.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ingrid Hutchins, and David Fisher has given her two minutes as well, so she gets four.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to also reiterate her point. I did have the opportunity to correspond with her, and I agree, we do need to work on that. TK has really been a failed rollout. We need to do better. But beyond that, I'm actually here tonight to talk about school safety. As you know, I am running for school board in Area 6, and I have talked to several hundred people myself. Even before the incident at Kennedy a couple weeks ago, this was a frequent concern, is that parents don't feel comfortable sending their kids to our schools, and a lot of kids don't feel comfortable going to some of our schools, most importantly, our comprehensive high schools. Several years ago, we cut our SROs, and we had great plans to replace them with mental health services, additional adults on campus. Just coming on six months ago, we had our presentation on the status of that. It's been years now, and there's a void that continues to be vacant, and people are not feeling safe in our communities. And in a lot of cases, people are actually not safe. People are actually getting attacked on campus. This is something that we really need to take active action on, and it's not, there's no quick answer. It needs more people on campus, more adults. We need to hire the people we said we were gonna hire, and we need to actually commit to doing it, because otherwise, if we take action to take people off campus and we take that money back that we are spending on SROs, if we don't actually do anything with it, we're leaving our communities feeling like they have no one watching out for them and no one hearing their concerns. And when I tell you, I've talked to hundreds of people about this, they are really concerned. It's really becoming an issue in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, and I am using time seated to me by David Fisher.
Four minutes.
Four minutes total. Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Ingrid Hutchins, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Capital City. Although our campus is in Area 5, our students live in every section of our district, so our students are actually members of all of your communities. I'm here tonight to highlight how inequitable some of the district's practices are in relation to students at Cap City and how biases against alternative education have prevented students from receiving the quality education that they are promised. Our first and most immediate issue is access to materials. The district adopted a new K-6 science curriculum in alignment with the next-generation science standards in California. An important component of our program is the hands-on kit that it includes. Each K-6 grade teacher in the district was supposed to receive one of these kits. However, the K-6 grade online teachers at Capital City did not receive these. We at first thought that this was just an oversight, so our principal, Mr. Amerine, reached out to Library Textbook Services. He was told that we would not be receiving the kits, and he was given a plethora of very, very poor excuses for why we wouldn't be receiving them. He replied back to Textbook Services, letting them know that our students deserve access to the same materials that students attending classes in brick-and-mortar schools have. Library Textbook Services disagreed with him. He also let them know that teachers on our staff are voicing our concern that this is a Williams Act violation. Library Textbook Services replied that they believe that they can legally deny students access to these materials because they are learning online. They did, however, decide to send one set per grade level, but not for the online teachers. These kits were only for the two teachers teaching in-person independent studies. If you're unfamiliar with that program, students have individual meetings with a teacher for an hour each week. Those two teachers receive kits for multiple grade levels for full classes, even though they only have a few students at each grade level. Those of us who teach our students every day are being denied the same materials. How can a school district deny their students access to curricular materials that they need to succeed? The people making this decision are not teachers, and I'm also fairly certain that they are not familiar with the next-generation science standards, because if they were, they'd know that planning and conducting investigations are an integral part of the standards. For example, in second grade, the very first standard in ecosystems requires students to plan and conduct an investigation to determine if plants need sunlight and water to grow. In matter and its interactions, the standard is to plan and conduct an investigation to describe and classify different kinds of materials by their observable properties. Instead of providing the materials necessary for students to access the core curriculum and meet the standards, Library Textbook Services has determined that students learning from home don't have the right to access the materials necessary. Beyond the standards, hands-on learning, experiments, et cetera, engage students in their own learning. If we want to encourage our students to enter the sciences, go to college, or just be interested in the learning itself, we must provide them with interesting educational experiences, such as conducting investigations. And it's not an extra expense, it's a component of our program that the district has already purchased. Another concern we have is meeting students where they are. Our district currently has a chronic absenteeism rate that has fluctuated in the past few months from 3% to 20%. Has the district engaged in sincere conversations regarding the obstacles to this regular attendance? What options have been offered to those students? What types of alternative ed has the district discussed with these families? Does the district even acknowledge that they have an online program housed at Cap City that could very well meet the needs of standards who do not regularly attend school? While it's not going to suit the needs of every student, it can very well cut down on the absenteeism for many students who miss class because physically attending school itself is a barrier to their education. We must always remember that our experiences are not the only experiences that exist. Many families struggle with health issues, lack of transportation, worries about safety and housing instability. Students may struggle with the ability to focus in group situations or have sensory processing differences, extreme anxiety, or educational trauma. Giving these students alternative education options is one of the many areas in which our district can support its students, but currently is missing its mark. Equity is not found in assessments and...
Can I wrap it up just one little bit?
So equity is not found in assessments and data points, which is where we tend to put our emphasis. Equity includes access to education... Equity includes access to educational resources. Equity includes inclusion and support. Equity is meeting our students where they currently are and working with them to find ways to unlock their potential. But that can't happen if we keep having a top-down management style. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Teresa Hannerman. And John Borsos has given her two minutes as well.
All right, four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Hanneman. I spent the first 21 years of my career at Parkway and I'm now teaching third grade at Cap City. I'm here to address the lack of equity regarding the allocation of science materials for our students at Cap City. I was part of the group of teachers who volunteered to pilot the science curriculums last year. I was really excited with the program we recommended and then adopted as it was so hands-on and really fostered an excitement for science in my class. I was dumbfounded when I found out that our students at Cap City would not be provided the same materials as all of the other students in the district. At first, I thought this must be an oversight as we started the school year without the curriculum we needed. But it is now the beginning of November and after multiple requests to library services from our admin, science kits were finally only provided for our two in-person elementary teachers. But the online teachers do not have access to the hands-on materials. Our students from one kinder, one first, two second, two third, one fourth, two fifth, and one sixth grade class will not have the opportunity to discover, explore, experiment, analyze, or interpret their data because somebody in this district decided to not order materials for our students in the online learning environment. Our students are from all of your areas. You may say, well, they're at home, they would never get the materials back. The science kits are full of materials that will need to be replenished each year. You may say, well, there isn't any supervision of how the materials are handled. But it would be easy and likely engaging to include families in the process or to communicate the expectations and support students may need. Is this a Williams Act violation? We had a Williams review every year at Parkway and this would not fly at a brick-and-mortar school. So why is it okay to do so to our online learners? I know it's not a money issue because we have a huge surplus. And I recently became aware that the previous in-house counsel who resigned was just rehired as an outside attorney. His pay went from approximately $70 an hour to $300 an hour. As Board President Pritchett so affectionately called him, "the heart of our district." How many science kits could you have purchased for the price of your former, now-current attorney? This is about priorities. The heart of our district is our students and our students deserve to have the same access to the curriculum and learning opportunities, whether they attend Parkway or Phoebe Hurst or Cap City. Please look into the discrepancy in resources that are allocated for brick-and-mortar schools versus our online learning school. Next, high rates of absenteeism have been an ongoing issue in our district, particularly since COVID hit. We currently have an attendance rate of 92.7% and a chronic absence rate of about 20%. I'm curious, when families are contacted regarding attendance and how we can support them, are they informed about the alternative learning option through Cap City? The online learning environment could be an opportunity for students with attendance challenges to still access learning. Our program offers some flexibility while maintaining high expectations. We are better able to offer targeted small group or one-on-one instruction to support students' needs as well as giving students the enrichment they may not receive in brick-and-mortar. The district stresses the importance of increased graduation rates and decreased absenteeism and Cap City could be an important resource for addressing these district goals. Finally, I'd like to again urge the board to vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist, to level the playing field by providing more opportunities to participate in board meetings, by allowing phone-in comments, Zoom comments, and comments to be read by staff. We have students, community members, and employees who are not able to attend board meetings due to finances, jobs, family obligations, et cetera. And their voices are just as important as the voices of those of us who were able to make the trek down for the board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment.
Next up is Nancy, followed by April Ibarra, Valentin Hernandez, and Orelia Padilla.
Who was the first public comment?
It only says Nancy. Nancy wanted to talk about Ethel Phillips.
Buenas tardes a todos. Agradezco este tiempo. Yo vengo aquí como un padre muy preocupado de esta escuela. Tal vez sea yo en este momento el único padre que está aquí. Tal vez por razones que algunos otros padres no han venido. Pero para mí es muy importante ya que la vida de mi hija, la salud de mi hija es muy importante. El mes pasado pasaron dos cosas en esta escuela. Una fue de que una maestra sustituta llegó a la escuela. La primera cosa que quiero hablar es sobre...
The first things I want to talk about.
El primer incidente que pasó en la escuela.
The incident that happened in the school.
Sobre un sustituto. Una maestra sustituta.
A substitute teacher.
Los niños estaban al parecer en recreo.
The kids were in the playground.
Y estas maestras sustitutas estaba con el grupo de la clase de mi hija.
The substitute teacher was with the group where my daughter was.
Y mi hija me dijo que esta sustituta los había jalado del brazo, del hombro, y del cuello.
My daughter told me that the substitute teacher was pulling them from the arm, the hair, and the shoulder.
Sí.
And the shoulder.
Los niños avisaron a su maestro y avisaron a la oficina y al parecer sí hablaron con ella.
The kid told the office and the regular teacher and seems to be that they talked to her.
Ella lo que dijo y lo que sé que dijo que ella pensaba que estaba bien hacer eso.
What I was told that the teacher mentioned that that was okay to do that.
Yo lo que les quiero pedir relacionado a este primer tema.
What I would like to ask about this first point.
Es que estos maestros sustitutos se han capacitados como para enseñar y como para cuidar a nuestros hijos.
That this substitute teacher would be trained and be capacitated to do this kind of job.
Porque lo que dijo esta persona, esta maestra sustituta, o como quiera llamarle, no estaba capacitada para que nuestros hijos estén seguros en la escuela.
Because what the substitute teacher, or whatever they call, she wasn't trained to be teaching in the school.
¿Con qué seguridad nosotros podemos mandar a nuestros hijos a estudiar?
We as a parent, how we can send our students to school to study.
Y el segundo tema es sobre el caso que pasó el día 13 de octubre.
And the second point is the case that happened on October 13.
Del salón del maestro señor Mister Rico.
The classroom for Mister Rico.
De que esa clase fue intoxicada por un olor que salió.
And the class was intoxicated for a smell that came out in the salón, in the classroom.
Y dentro del salón. Y estos niños algunos fueron desmayados.
And some of the children fainted.
Y fueron llevados al hospital de emergencia.
And they were took to emergency.
Eso pasó como a las 9:00 de la mañana.
That didn't happen around night and the morning.
Y a nosotros nos avisaron entre 11:00, 11:45.
And the parents were called between 11:00 and 11:45.
Después de que pasó esto.
After it happened.
Para nosotros es muy importante de que si pasa algo, nos llamen.
For us, very important when things happen like that, they call us.
También quiero decir que después de que pasó esto, una semana después.
I also want to talk about that after this happened, a week after.
Recibimos un mensaje del director.
We received a message from the director, from the principal of the school.
Y nos dijo que había aparecido un nuevo olor.
And he told that a new smell came out.
Al parecer venía del drenaje.
Seems to be from the drain.
Después de que pasó este incidente, más o menos aproximadamente una semana después.
After this incident happened, a week after.
Nos dijo que iban a limpiar el drenaje.
And we were told that the drain would be clean.
Yo personalmente, con otra madre, hablamos con el director.
And myself and another parent, we talked to the principal.
Y le fuimos a preguntar si ya sabía qué es lo que estaba pasando con lo del drenaje.
We went to ask to see what's going on with the drain.
Nos dijo que habían contratado a unos profesionales que se especializan en el drenaje.
And we were told that they contract a company that cleaned this type of drain.
Y ellos dijeron que cuando estaban sacando un poco de lo que tenía el drenaje, al parecer ellos decían que era diesel.
And seems to be that when they were cleaning the drain, it seems to be that showed something that was diesel.
Así que en ese momento el director llamó a la compañía para preguntar cuáles fueron los resultados de las pruebas.
So the principal called the company to see what was the result after the cleaning up.
Y lo que nos dijo el director, que en ese momento le habían dicho, era que se hicieron dos pruebas y habían salido positivo a 100% diesel.
And they told the principal, they did two testing and seems to be that they came out positive or diesel.
Entonces, mi pregunta es...
My question to you is...
Si ya hicieron o ya contactaron nuevamente después de haber sabido que era diesel, si ya contrataron a los especialistas para ver qué procedimiento iba a seguir.
So my question is, is they already contracted another company to see what would be the process after they find out that was diesel.
We're going to have a staff member come talk to you.
Entonces van a tener una persona que van a hablar con usted.
Okay. Yo les quisiera pedir que tomen en serio este asunto.
I would like to ask you to please take it serious.
Ya que si solamente se tomaron las pruebas para analizar cuál era el olor que había salido, había perjudicado a los niños.
Because if they did the testing to see what was the smell that was damaged the kids.
Ese olor puede volver a salir en cualquier momento.
That smell came out in any time.
Así como pasó esto y sorprendió a todos.
The same way it happened and surprised everybody.
Y a mí no me gustaría que mi hija pasara por esto y yo tuviera que ir corriendo hacia el hospital.
And I don't like my daughter to have the same thing and for me to go running to the hospital.
Completely understood. We'll have a staff member come.
Entonces ellos entienden y van a dejar una persona que hable con usted.
Okay. Les agradezco. Gracias.
Gracias. Next speaker.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I am here this evening. I actually had a group of parents who wanted to participate tonight, but they could not because there's not a way for them to engage in public comment via Zoom. And so that's a disadvantage and not very equitable on their part. I'm here to ask in regards to what's happened in the Hiram Johnson community with the recent incident of a shooting that took place, not necessarily at the school, but outside of the school and the response. Hiram Johnson teachers and staff have worked extremely hard to make their school a safe place and to also see their kids achieve much further than what the media seems to circulate. And so in this circumstance, when this took place, the community had no idea on what was happening until three hours later. And I don't blame the principal for that because he was busy taking care of, working with the police to try and figure everything out, working with teachers, trying to keep the teachers safe. But what's the communication process and policy for the district? Why wasn't someone at the district communicating to parents? And why were we learning from text messages and rumors and from the media? With that said, I just want to add that I've been in my community and talking and everything that you've heard tonight are some of the same things that I'm hearing in my community. This is why it's important to really take community schools serious when we think about the schools that are being given money for this. We need to have community forums and we need to include our teachers and staff in those conversations so that we can better meet the needs of our community per what they feel like they need. I also want to highlight that when we think about equity, I see constantly the updates on the social media for the district. And I appreciate that they are giving highlights to the good things happening at many schools. But I don't ever see Hiram Johnson there. And I'm just going to close with this because I see my time is up. Hiram Johnson's football team won the Greater Sacramento League on Friday, October 28th. And they were very excited about that. And the coach who came up here earlier, Coach Gomes, has worked really hard to make that happen. And he can't, you know, he has a disadvantage with what he mentioned earlier. So I really hope that you guys take his public comment into consideration and have those conversations. Because our kids are at a disadvantage, we don't have the same resources for them. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Valentin Hernandez. And I'd like to advocate for, I'm from Class of 85 and we had a police officer present, a security officer present. I was directly in front when that shooting happened. The shots were coming towards the school. There could have been children hit, the parents that were parked there. We, earlier in the year, had a meeting and were told more or less, I don't know what happened, that there was going to be a security presence. And that school especially needs one. There's over, what, 2,000 kids there. The crossing guards, there is none. It's atrocious. It's a miracle that a kid hasn't been hit yet. So I don't know what you can do about that. The children are so desensitized about going to that school, safety-wise. So, or do we do not have resources to have police officers present or a security officer present? Is what I'm asking.
We'll be talking about it at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Orelia Padilla. I've been in the community for a long time. I have children in David Lubin Sutter Middle School, West Campus. Very active in West Campus. Many parents actually were, we were such a volunteer and active. We were so active. I drove kids, students, tennis students in my vehicle all the time. So I'm involved. Now, with my child in Hiram Johnson, it is not only atrocious, the way that it's been, 2,000 kids? Come on, there's not enough staff. There is no campus monitor. What are we doing? This is unacceptable. Who do we hold accountable for this? I've lived in that community for 30 years. I pay property taxes. This is a public school. Let's bring security, especially in a high school. I was present October 7. Here in my phone is the 911 call I made at 3:30 when I picked up my 16-year-old in front of the school. I witnessed everything. Those shots were going towards the school where the kids walk. I was told that there was going to be security. There should be security. There should be monitors inside the school. There should be police presence outside during the school, after dismissal, and especially in our activities, our football games, our game events. Please, we could only volunteer so much as parents, but we need that support. We need to talk to our police, our city, and Mr. Aguilar Garcia, whoever is in charge of this. I am coming to you as a parent. I will volunteer my...
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have no more.
All right. Item 8.0, Special Presentation 8.1, Approved Resolution Number 3297, Recognition of Veterans Day. What do we have here to accept the resolution, Superintendent? Okay. All right. I have the pleasure of bringing this resolution to the board tonight of being a daughter and a wife of a veteran and knowing that many of our staff here within Sac City have served their time in the military risking their lives for our freedom. So with that, I will introduce Resolution Number 3297. Where is the United States of America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all? Whereas on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have valiantly defended the values throughout the nation's history. And whereas on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots and whose courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe. Now therefore be it resolved, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognized Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community members to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community. With that, can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 3297? I have a motion and a second. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
All right, perfect. Thank you. All right. Item 8.2, Resolution Number 3295, Recognition of Native American Heritage Month. We have Mamprit and Christina Prairie Chicken. And I believe our student board member is going to introduce this resolution. Go ahead.
Good evening, respected Board members and dear Superintendent. I'm Christina Prairie Chicken Narvus and I work in the Development Department. And at this time, I'd ask student board member McGurk to come down and read the...
Hi, my name is Liam McGurk. I am a student board member. I'm here for the Native American Resolution, Month Resolution. Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize the contribution of Native Americans to the history of the United States. Native Americans are original, the originally indigenous people of what is now the United States of America. Native Americans maintain vibrant cultures and traditions, hold deep rooted sense of community, and have made, continue to make an important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. California has the highest Native American population in the country. It is home to 109 federal recognized tribes with approximately 81 groups seeking recognition. California Native American Day was celebrated September 23rd, 2022. Over one half of the state's Native American population is composed of individuals and now their descendants who were relocated to large urban areas as part of federal government termination policy. Before the missionaries, the fur traps, and the gold rush era migrations, California Native American population was estimated at 2,000, 2,000, thank you, 200,000. Between 1840 and 1870, the population declined to 12,000 due to disease, forced removal, and death. The Census Bureau estimated that in 2000, there were more than 631,016 individual Native American descendants in California and more than 18,637 in the county of Sacramento. The city of Sacramento celebrates Indigenous People Day on October 10th, 2022. The California Department of Education School Dashboard indicates that Native American students within SCUSD are more likely to be chronically absent. Governor Newsom approved Assembly Bill 516, which excuses absence for participating in cultural ceremony or event. The Sacramento City Unified School District resides on land of the Nisong and Miwok people. SCUSD is committed to improving the academic and social emotional outcomes for Native American students and all students in regions. Yeah.
2021 to 2022 CDE Data Quest information indicates that indicates there are 27,000 Native American students in California and 213 in SCUSD. A recent pool of Infinite Campus data indicates that there are 537 SCUSD American Indian students that are classified as two or more races. SCUSD's American Indian education program provides tutoring, cultural programs, back-to-school events, field trips, and graduation recognitions for American Indian students enrolled in the program. SCUSD has committed to supporting students by providing services for self-identified American Indian students who are unable to enroll in AIAP program due to lack of documentation. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce the resolution?
Now therefore be it resolved that Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognized November 2022 as National Native American Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education urges within the district to observe National Native American Heritage Month and Native American Heritage Day with appropriate programs and activities.
Perfect. Good job. All right. With that, do we have any public comments?
We do have one speaker, Terrence Gladney.
As a student in Berkeley, I vividly remember the touch and feel of weaving a basket, a Native American basket, in 4th grade. I also vividly remember the sight and scent of smoking eucalyptus leaves in 7th grade and also the sounds of native drums and flutes in high school. You know, when we talk about these resolutions, we need to be able to touch and feel the outcome of these resolutions. Words don't exist in the real world beyond when we speak them. So we need to provide more tangible integration of culture in a true, authentic way. Not during Native American History Month or Heritage Month, but every day. We're on tribal land. There are many other public institutions that are providing land acknowledgements. And I asked, where is our districts sitting in the capital of California? We don't see that. There is a committee of community members tasked with renaming Sutter, which in our district really echoes and mirrors a lot of colonial processes and systems, robbing resources from neighborhoods and communities. Where's the urgency? We're coming up on two years and we've been told multiple, I've asked multiple times, and this goes to my point earlier, where who's holding you guys accountable if not yourselves? I cannot, you know, take action. I don't sit on that side of the dais. You guys do. So if we're going to uplift this work, then we need to match it with urgency on behalf of other members of the McGurk family who were tasked on that committee to rename that institution that has represented for many years in many ways hateful oppression, you know, just, I mean, just horrible things. Words don't live in the real world. In the real world, actions do. So again, I challenge you guys to not only say that you agree and nod your heads, but to come up with an actual timeline and hold yourselves and district accountable to meet that timeline and actually see some results. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Any additional public comment? All right. Do we have any board comment? All right. With that, I will ask for a motion. All right. And can I get a second? All right, student preferential vote?
Aye.
All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Item 8.3, Update on Construction Projects for Cesar Chavez, Edward Kimball, Nicholas, and Oak Ridge Elementary Schools. Good evening.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of board, Superintendent. Screen's not working behind you, so I'm going to take a couple ganders on the side to make sure I'm talking on the right slide. I am Chris Rollson. I serve as the Director of Three Facilities Management along with my colleague Nathaniel Browning. We have been working on three construction projects and design as part of the facilities master plan. And these projects were called out as part of the Equity Index that Mr. Browning went over on October 6th in his facilities master plan update. Today, we're going to focus on Edward Kimball, Cesar Chavez, Oak Ridge, and Nicholas Elementary School. Okay. Acronyms used in facilities, most notably DSA, Division Estate Architect, FMP, Facilities Master Plan, and least least back is LLP if you hear those in today's conversation. Reminder of the project timeline, started in May by hiring our design teams and our construction management firms reviewing our FMP. We're going to talk about the educational pedals, the specification that are guiding our work from the FMP today. Through the last several months, we have been doing initial design and coming up with what can fit on-site the parcel and the footprint of our properties. And we have been embarking on a large stakeholder engagement process that includes internal staff, site staff, department directors, and of course, the community over the last several weeks. We have come to a point where our building layout plan is ready to be seen this evening. And after this point, we will begin the design and development of those internal spaces. We will be continuing for the entire process, that continuous feedback loop with the community and our stakeholders. Coming soon, we have decided to do two phases inside of each of these three projects. Phase one being a site package that will go to DSA. It will be reviewed in the springtime. When that site package is approved, the contractor begins work. And while the contractor is working on the site packages, by site package, I mean basically the dirt and everything underneath it. That building plan is reviewed by DSA. And when that is approved, we begin building the building. Generally, a new school is taking about six months in the DSA process. So splitting this up provides an efficient process. To date, we are still on schedule. That's an important milestone for us. This November 3rd board meeting has always been on our calendar since May. And I am standing here today on May 3rd to give you this update. That's a credit to our design team, that a credit to our site, our site leaders and the community for participating and making sure that this does stay on schedule for our learners. The sequel process will begin. Mr. Browning will go through that process and bring board action in the spring. And construction does still, as scheduled, begin this summer. Ribbon cutting, for everybody that isn't yet aware, is the first day of school in 2025. Just a review of what Mr. Browning did go over on October 6th is a community input process that we have engaged in. We have met with site staff. We have done tours of new schools in the area. We have met with parents. We have gone to back-to-school nights. We've held community forums. We have broken bread with all of our communities by serving taco trucks and sandwiches and just making sure that our ears are wide open. We are hearing what their needs are for the physical space of their learners. And we are making sure that following our facilities master plan and that a community engagement, we will see that in our designs. A reminder, the board passed a facilities master plan last year that included educational specification, something we need to have as part of our approval process with the Department of Education. Sacramento City created six educational pedals as a checklist during design to ensure we implement the community or implement the community in board's direction from the facilities master plan. Learning environments. Learning environment should be like small learning communities and can be applied to the whole school or as an aspect in the school designed by grade levels and cohorts. An example you'll see this evening is what we're calling Cohort Neighborhoods at Nicholas. And you'll see that also in all three of our clusters of cohorts and how they're being designed. The learning environment should be flexible and connect to outdoor learning spaces. We already have a furniture committee reviewing new educational furniture and equipment for our programs. And you will see in the designs of all of the schools, several outdoor learning hubs and collaboration spaces attached to those classrooms. These new schools will also have outdoor connections and learning hubs sprinkled through the campus to enjoy the California weather. Safety and security. The school should have a warm and inviting welcome space. The school should include a community hub that offers students and families with a variety of needs, any additional supports provided by outside community partnerships. In these projects, we are calling it the family room and is located at the front of the school with a separate entrance. It will be big enough for a community meeting, but include a smaller confidential space, which includes a sink for medical-based service opportunities. All of our sites will have a single point of access during school hours for strategic fencing and security measures as part of the design. All of our sites will have new pickup drop-off spaces to increase safety for multiple modes of transportation. Inquiry and experimental learning. The new schools will have two flex space classrooms, making it possible to be art, music, PE, after-school, or any other program the site may offer. We are also including a cooking demonstration station similar to that at Floyd Farms, so the site may partner with food literacy and provide opportunities in education and food nutrition. Our media resource hubs, also known as libraries, are bigger and can be used for individual quiet education or project-based group work. Individualized supports. Our designs will incorporate in connection with the Special Education Department, spaces for self-contained learning spaces. It would include breakout spaces or other support service spaces that is easily accessible to all of our learners. Our designs will also provide spaces for our resource specialists that provide service time, service full-time on a campus, a landing spot that is confidential and convenient. Fitness and athletics. Overwhelmingly, in each of our community engagement meetings, athletic and outdoor play spaces were number one. We are providing age-appropriate playground spaces from preschool through 12 years old. Our sites will also have a U-14-sized soccer field, a size used by our students for their recreational leagues. Our MP room will be double the size at all of our sites, allowing for a full-size basketball court and volleyball court, not to mention a stage grand enough to perform and show off talents of our students from music to drama to art, truly making it a multi-use space. Dining and experience and nutrition. Our kitchens and MP rooms will be capable to serve our students any meal necessary for proper nutrition. Easily accessed from any point on campus, it will include a large 6,000-square-foot interior space with large garage-style doors to connect to the outdoor dining. This will allow the outside environment inside, this will allow the outdoor outside environment inside and help capitalize on lessons learned during the COVID pandemic of providing large spaces with maximized outdoor air opportunities and improving our indoor air quality opportunities. We'll start at Cesar Chavez. As a reminder on your left, Edward Kimball was opened in 1954, Chavez in 2001. Chavez is an all-portable site. And the combined science is 72,000 square feet and has a capacity for 880 students. for 880 students. The new campus will be constructed over the current Cesar Chavez property. Our interim housing plan has these portals being relocated to the Kimball side so that our youngest learners at Kimball do not need to see change to their physicals campus until the new school is ready. The new admin library building and new multipurpose and family room building will be facing toward Edward Kimball Park. An expanded parking lot will provide, and it's going to be bigger than the one you see on the picture there, is provided, and a separate kindergarten parking lot is provided. New two-story classroom buildings are oriented for natural daylighting, single secured point of entry with visual security and parking lots, and to the quad, secure perimeter fencing with gates to be opened only during drop-off and pickup, separate kinder, parent, and bus drop-off with additional parking as part of Title V, expansive outdoor space for play and outdoor learning, a separate kindergarten play area, outdoor basketball courts, soccer field, shaded areas. Through this process, we've come to understand the culture and program already in place at the two separate physical schools. It is our intent to bring this into a single campus style while representing and designing with age-appropriate separation, finding a way to be separate but together. Our current design has an opportunity to enroll and serve 850 students at 69,000 square The single, the bottom floor has the kindergarten classrooms integrated into the classroom buildings with direct access to outdoor learning areas and kindergarten playground. Each grade-level classroom pod is surrounded by a collaboration area with adjacent outdoor learning. The multipurpose room will include basketball, volleyball, large stage, and direct connection to shaded outdoor dining area. A family room which can be used by parents or the local community is located adjacent to the main entry. The administration building will have a welcoming front entrance and will include a reception area, office, lounge, and workroom. The library is centrally located within the campus with direct connection to the outdoor courtyard. Flexible lab spaces are provided for PE, as Edward Kimball provides, and art, as Cesar Chavez also provides. These flex spaces will be also available to our after-school programs. And yes, the kindergarten rooms have their own restrooms. At the second level, each grade-level pod is surrounded by its own collaborate area adjacent to a covered outdoor learning patio. There are small group breakout rooms, restrooms, and staff support spaces on both floors of this classroom building. The second floor can be accessed by an elevator and multiple stairways, and daylighting will be brought into the first floor by multiple, multi-level light wells. As part of the educational pedals, a warm and welcoming front is on the right, and on the left is the family room and also part of the FMP. Both of those areas are being called out in the FMP as part of our educational pedals, and the wider gate will be open for the start and end of each school day, but closed to provide a single point of entry during school hours, also a marker in our educational pedals. The library or media hub is located in the central part of the new campus, and in the distance, you will see the stairs that will lead you to the upper grade levels. Nicholas Elementary School. The current Nicholas, built in 1962, is 52,000 square feet and has a capacity to enroll 750 students. This site has a smud power line and easement on the north end of the property, since the building of the school CD now requires 150-foot setback from power lines like those at Nicholas, and that is what's indicated on the map. And as you can see, almost 50% of the classrooms currently sit in the setback. Nicholas has, has out-of-compliant restrooms in several parts of the campus, an awkward pickup and drop-off situation, and a worn-out playfield. In fact, Nicholas was one of the worst-conditioned facilities in Sacramento City Unified as evaluated during the FMP process. But not all things will be torn down. On the south end of the campus, a large heritage oak that houses special events and memories for many families remain and become part of our design. The new Nicholas will be approximately 58,000 square feet and then be enabled to enroll 650 students. On this layout, you can see the red dashed lines, that is the CDE setback, and you can see all of our classrooms are beyond that line. The parking lot will include a longer drive, helping bring traffic off of the street during those busy times, and provide for a safer pickup opportunity. The driveway will also line up with an existing traffic light, providing safer and more controlled crossing of the street from our schools. The office, NPR, and family room all welcome you on the corner of the property. The classrooms are clustered into neighborhoods by grade level, starting with the TK and K space all the way through sixth grade. Each grade level will have its own collaboration space, and there'll be several outdoor learning hubs sprinkled throughout the property. The kindergarten-sized rooms will have their own restroom and be located towards the front with available parking to meet the Title V requirements. Finally, there will be access points with a drop-off zone on the east side of campus, something that is not currently available to Nicholas. The garden will also be located closer to the street and provide an opportunity for the community to help care for this garden in off-hours and during the summer. Like other schools, this will have a U-14-sized soccer field, big enough for this age group, and have the same type of MP room for all those activities. The media hub will be located around the tree and provide for an outdoor study space, seating, and be located at such an angle for sixth-grade promotion or similar large events to have seating from the MP room or down Main Street in either direction and see the action. This is the front entrance for the new Nicholas, there will be a security fence and fencing and gates across it. This will have and be provided for a single point of access. On the right side is the new front door to Nicholas, on the left side will be the TK kindergarten wing. Here's that heritage oak, so just beneath it is the new library hub, it'll also have a VAPA space, plenty of outdoor education space. To the upper left is the MP room with its covered parking, or covered parking, covered eating, the TK just and kindergarten being above the tree in this picture. This next is the classroom neighborhood wings continuing, they are clustered in first grade with its own collaboration space, then second grade with its own collaboration space, and continues down. There are restrooms for first and second, third and fourth, and fifth and sixth. Oak Ridge Elementary School. The current Oak Ridge, built in 1951, is 41,820 square feet and has a capacity to enroll 750 students. When discussing with anyone about things that challenge Oak Ridge the most, being so close to the Main Street. Limited parking, little opportunity for safe drop-off and pickup. There's also limited playground structure and play space, and the field is not utilized by Oak Ridge very much. One thing they are proud of at Oak Ridge is the generational enrollment in this school. It has had a steady enrollment of parents that went to Oak Ridge, now having their kids go there, and in some cases, their grandchildren go there. Nathaniel and I had the pleasure to meet a lot of those families during our community meetings, and while this is, they will miss the campus, the excitement was real for change. The new school will be built where the vacant field is now. This will allow the campus to push back away from the Main Street and provide a new, long driveway that brings all of the cars off the street and provide a safer pickup and drop-off. Will also align with the traffic signal in place, providing for controlled and safe crossings with all the traffic. The fields have been out front, will provide for community use during, without needing to go through the campus on weekends, and with strategic fencing, the campus can remain locked after hours and weekends, but still provide permitted and community use. This campus, like Chavez-Kimball campus, will have a two-story component, but being in California, being able to enjoy outdoor exterior circulation space. The MP room, family room, and admin office will be in the front and welcome space for this new campus. It will have secondary access for kindergarten as part of the Title V requirement. The classroom spaces will be shaped in a U-shaped design to allow everyone to be connected with nothing blocking access to views of the whole campus from inside. As we zoom in, you can see spaces for special education, the flex space provided, outdoor learning spaces, and a library in the center of the campus. A community garden will be in the front and similar to Nicholas, provide access to the community to help care for the space in the summer that is separate from accessing the whole campus. A single point of entry is provided during school hours, but large egress gates will be available by the kitchen and the office. This new Oak Ridge will grow to 54,000 square feet, mainly in the district's effort to provide for the community and student support spaces that are not currently in the old Oak Ridge layout. This is the front of the campus, MP room on the left, the front door will be on the right, and the family space will be behind the bus. This is the interior of the campus from the quad looking up into the classrooms. The outdoor quad area will be an outdoor educational space. And with the students being on the second level, we're providing larger exterior circulation spaces that will include breakout spaces for one-on-one or group activities and being able to remain upstairs. I'd like to thank our design teams that are here in the audience tonight to help answer any questions if I stumble. These teams have experience in building brand-new schools. They've been doing it for, I can tell you, decades, and our construction management firms have been doing it similar. They have been doing it here in Sacramento County, so you have local design teams, they have been to every one of our meetings, they have met with all of our community meetings, they have participated 100% in making sure that this is a successful Sac City project. Next steps, we're in the process selecting the contractor that is out on the street, that remains out on the street between now through January. We have a selection committee that is going through and selecting by best value, we met on Tuesday, for Edward Kimball, Cesar Chavez, and will begin that process for all of the schools in the next coming weeks. Interim housing plans is on our to-do list. We have, excuse me, created them for Cesar Chavez and Nicholas moving to CB Wire. Oak Ridge is not going to be impacted for needing interim housing, they will remain in their campus while we build in the field. Sequel action is in the spring, I will be back in the spring to provide you a more detailed update, which will include what interim housing means, what summers will look like this summer, and how our school years will look during the next two school years. And of course, I will invite you right now, so I don't forget, but groundbreaking is not that far away. We will see you in June for Cesar Chavez and the Nicholas, Oak Ridge will be when school starts next year. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, very exciting. Do we have any public comment?
Terrence Gladney.
Hello again. I want to thank Chris and Nathaniel and the entire team for their work on the heels of a bond oversight committee that I sat in with those gentlemen last night. We were at Kennedy and we toured some of the modernization work, and it was really comforting and delightful to see how they integrated some of the previous components of the school and included it to add a warm touch to such a modern facility, so I hope that as much as possible, that's able to be integrated in these projects. I do see that there's some of that with the centralization of the oak tree as a, as a central meeting space at, at one of the sites. I did appreciate the approachable terminology such as classroom neighborhoods and family rooms. I think this is a great start. I think that, you know, as we look at developing new facilities, we have the opportunity to also reassess our current landscape and infrastructure, and not necessarily go down the path of building new where there's existing school sites, but look at things like triangulation because we have some areas where we do have a huge concentration of school sites, and I'm a big proponent of looking at, you know, if we have two or more school sites in a very, a very close area, maybe we eliminate all of those and build new centrally between them so that no one really is disenfranchised and loses their community, but we're establishing a new community and culture for all of them collectively. And looking at Oak Ridge, for example, with it being so close to Keith B. Kenny and Board Member Philip speaking to how her trustee area does not have a middle school, and Keith B. Kenny having such a low enrollment, perhaps we consider converting that to a middle school so we can honor additional needs that exist, while again, honoring the legacy of schools like Oak Ridge. So I'm hoping that we continue to be innovative, not only in the development and the building, but also in our thought process, not only with facilities, but also just in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? All right, do we have any board comment, question? Member Villa?
No questions. Obviously, I attended the community event at Nicholas, and this is a spectacular project. I'm really looking forward to it. So many families were looking forward to it as well, so thank you guys for doing this work. I can't wait to be there in June.
Member Garcia?
I just want to, this is super exciting. I can't wait for the students to learn in these spaces, they're just so inspiring. I did just want to lift up that I appreciate the TK and the, and the kinder sort of area being contained. I think that's really important rather than TK being sort of separately and across campus. So thank you for that. I also really, it's really exciting to see two levels of classrooms. I think it maximizes opportunities. I'm thinking of, now that we will have expanded learning opportunity programs, a lot of those after-school programming, so it just creates more space for many of those opportunities to be onsite, so that's really exciting too. I did have a question about the athletic fields. I'm not sure if, how you determine what kind of athletic field is appropriate for the particular school site. I see that soccer fields and basketball courts are the ones that are, I guess, chosen, so I'm just not sure if, how you, how you arrive at that compared to, I don't know, maybe like a baseball field or something. So just wondering what the thought process is there.
So soccer and all three of the schools and the community events, it was, it was soccer field.
Number one?
That's what they said, they wanted a soccer field. So we made sure, right now, they're elementary schools, so in reality, they're, they're elementary play spaces. They're not dedicated like at a high school, you have your football field, your baseball field. It's still time, we can try to fit in other things, but making sure that there's enough acreage to handle at least the soccer field, because inside the soccer field of that size, you can set up a football field, you can put in a baseball diamond, there's opportunities inside of, making sure that we just, we're providing the acreage and it's not just this little grass circle of something. We want to, you know, we, Nathaniel went with me, he did more of the playing than I did at recess at Chavez, and they just, they have nothing. They have a hard court with some basketball courts, and they were doing four-square, and they were trying to play catch, and you just ask them, they just love to go play football somewhere. And sometimes they get to go play out in the grass that's kind of under a tree, but that's also where they're reading, and that's also where a classroom's doing a little bit of a PE lesson, they just don't have that re, that, that need met, and this will help meet that need, and it can be expanded at almost any sport that they would want to do. Like when we're talking hardcore, you can still do kickball instead of just four-square, you can do pickleball layouts, you can do volleyball layouts, there's just opportunity there, and that's, I think, just generic by saying a soccer field could fit.
Okay, so just, just wondering, you know, I know, I know my girls did, I like girls on the run, where they go run, other, they started running club, just thinking of those types of opportunities.
We've talked about a walking track, we're test drive in a new elementary version of a walking track at Elder Creek right now that is currently being built, and if we can make that work, a rubberized, like that all-weather track that's available and used for PE and recess and community, I, we've already tried to fit it at Nicholas, I would imagine it would fit at all of our spaces and just be another opportunity.
Okay, I'm just, I'm glad to hear that you're maximizing opportunities and creating spaces that can be easily shifted to another, accommodate another, just another opportunity for our students. So, and then my last question is, just thinking of, just like energy efficiencies, I know everything is very energy efficient, I just don't know about like solar roofing, if that's something that is considered or?
So there's new code coming in January, and we're very aware of it, includes the requirement of like 50% shade, solar, battery storage, those kind of things. Not only is that code requirement, Sac City has been leading for a long time in trying to find ways to be sustainable, and sustainable means a lot of different things, but Nathaniel's working really hard to make sure that that is part of our design and that's in our conversations, and it would have been regardless here at Sac City, but you will see, you know, something we've talked about with all the designers, the biggest principal issue is pickup-dropoff, and it's 112 outside or it's raining, and there's just nothing covered in the space along the curb. So it's an easy to put some type of shade shelter. So it's an easy to put some type of shade shelter that can have some solar panels on top of it, and the community can see it, they're expecting it. It certainly helps with the sustainable aspect of it, but it also provides the purpose the kids care about, is not getting really hot and/or rained on while they're waiting for mom or dad or their guardian to come pick them up.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. This is outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rhodes?
What's going on, man?
How's it going?
Good, good, good. So what I appreciate most about this is we've been at multiple meetings at Leonakis with teachers, and then at Chavez, I've seen you at all the events as well, and engaging with community. But once again, what I appreciate is, from those conversations, I see the changes and iterations of what you guys are doing, right? And so some of the things you touched on were from conversations that you've had with community that we've had, and I really appreciate that, and you guys' dedication to making sure that the community voice, the teachers, everyone at the community, school site community, is heard, the process, and is shown here. And so I look forward to more of this. I'm very excited about the process. So thank you. Good job, man.
Member Maraski?
Thank you so much. No questions and just echo the appreciation from my colleagues. I'm really excited. One of the things that I'm excited about is the outdoor space for outdoor learning, outdoor dining. I think, you know, coming off of the COVID pandemic, I think it's really smart, and it's, you know, something that maximizes our, you know, our environment here in Sacramento. So I'm just really thankful. I just want to also acknowledge, you know, the voters who supported Measure H. This is an exciting proof of concept for our community of what can be done in Sac City, and it's terrific. I don't have any comments. You guys are the professionals, I feel, that we're in very, very good hands with you all. So thank you so much for your work and look forward to that groundbreaking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, just again, thank you for the thoughtfulness that has gone through this whole process. It really shows in the work that you showed tonight. Next time, I want to see some pictures of Nathaniel playing.
I have one, but he won't let me show it.
I have to tell you, as you know, I represent the far east of the district, and I, just to, you know, a mile or two down the road, I see a lot of construction in the San Juan Unified School District happening, and I have felt very envious for quite some time seeing what's being built. So I'm really proud that we're able to do that for our students in Sac City, and thank you. And we're looking forward to having you back and seeing the progress.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Item 9.0, public hearing, 9.1, public hearing and approval of resolution number 3294, compliance with pupil textbook and instructional materials incentive program. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Pella, and I am the Director of Professional Learning for Literacy, English Language Arts and Humanities, and I am also currently overseeing a K-12 History/Social Sciences Instructional Materials adoption that started in the summer with a pre-screening. We have over 50 teachers engaged in piloting brand-new History/Social Sciences materials in our district. And I am joined here today by Mrs. Tasha Weatherall, who is a district librarian, who, in cooperation and collaboration with Library Textbook Services, I apologize, has done an outstanding job making sure that we are in compliance with the Williams Review. So of course, in line with our core values and guiding principles, having, being in compliance with instructional materials is clearly an issue of leveled playing field So Ed Code Section 60119 specifies the governing board shall hold a public hearing on or before the end of the eighth week of this school year. The board shall make a determination through a resolution as to whether each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each subject consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the state board, and to identify the remedy for any insufficiencies. This process is also referred to as Williams Act or Williams Review. As specified in Ed Code, the purpose of SCOWI, SCOWI's visits to Sac City schools is to, one, determine that if pupils have sufficient instructional materials in four core subject areas: English Language Arts, Mathematics, History/Social Science and Science, including science laboratory equipment in grades nine through 12, and, as applicable, in foreign language and health. Two, the purpose of SCOWI's visits to Sac City schools is to determine if there is any facility condition that poses an emergency or urgent threat to the health or safety of pupils or staff. And three, determine if the school has provided accurate data on the annual school accountability report card related to the sufficiency of instructional materials and the safety, cleanliness, and adequacy of school facilities, including good repair. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Weatherall to explain how the process went.
So I'm really nervous about being up in front of people. Even though I was a classroom teacher for 20 years, it makes me really nervous to be up in front of adults. So in May, it says all sites were provided with textbook inventory lists and surveyed for textbook instructional material needs. Not all of the sites in Sac City are actually given that list. It's, the SCOWI requires one-fourth of the schools to be physically surveyed, so only one-fourth of our schools actually get looked at. The list, the Williams site list, is provided by SCOWI. They have, they determined what the schools would be this year. It was a new list, previous, it was a different list than the list that we had had for like the last 10 years. So we had a brand-new list of schools this year. We will get another new list this spring for the next three years. So every three years, the list will change in, because of the new legislation that was passed recently. Textbooks and instructional materials are moved and shuffled and changed from classroom to classroom to make sure that classes have what they're supposed to for each grade level and teacher that they, for the students that they have at their sites. SCOWI schedules site visits. About a fourth of the site visits are unannounced, so we get the list of who's going to be visited, and a fourth of them get a phone call or email two days to a week ahead of time saying, "We're coming to your site tomorrow." The other sites have a scheduled visit, so they know when the sites are, when SCOWI's coming. They are provided with a clear list of what materials need to be in each classroom for each student for all of the subject areas. SCOWI then comes out with two of their employees, and sometimes me, to check, to check half of the, well, to check a class for each grade level, and then if that classroom passes, then they don't go to the other classrooms in that grade level. If they don't pass, then they check all of the classes in that grade level. So they can be there, they can be on a site from anywhere from two hours to seven, depending on how large the site is. And that's true K-12, and on all the sites, K-12. They are either, they either pass, or they are missing materials, and when they are missing materials, they contact myself or LTS and say, "We need, we got new students," or "We thought we had the materials and we don't. Please send us those." And then we clear the insufficiencies, usually within a day or two, depending on what the quantity is. So that's, they're taken care of very quickly. The list of sites is here. I won't read all of them. Most of them are the same as they've been for the previous 10 years. There were several new sites on the list this year who had never done Williams Review before, which is, can be a little stressful, but we managed to get through all of it. And I worked closely with all of the sites on an almost daily basis, starting in August, to make sure that sites were ready for their visits. We did end up having 100% of our schools have sufficient textbooks and instructional materials by the eighth week of school. So any insufficiencies that we did have, we cleared up before that time that we were required to. I don't, I'm assuming this number is correct. This $2,337,272 was used towards the purchase of state-adopted core instructional materials. I'm not, I'm not privy to that information. I'm just, and then we also did purchase the new K-5 science curriculum, and then next year we'll adopt, or at the end of this school year, we'll adopt the new History/Social Science for K-12, which everybody is very excited about. I'm a little jealous that I'm not still in the classroom. So, do I just read this? I don't know. Do I just read this? I don't know. Okay. So, recommendation is to approve the resolution number 3294 that certifies that each Sacramento City Unified School District student has sufficient textbooks and/or instructional materials in all core subjects that are aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks. Additionally, the resolution certifies the availability of science lab equipment at grades nine through 12.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, I will move us from a hearing to action. Do we have any public comment?
We have two speakers, Ingrid Hutchins and Damian Harmony.
Good evening again. I'm sure you guys understand what I'm going to be saying. There is no way we have 100% of all our materials in all four core subjects. I've already spoken to you to let you know that our school, Sac City, does not have materials for our online students, and they are very much part of our school population. I don't know where the 100% can come from, because we have gone into multiple email conversations with library textbook services. So they, this whole compliance remedies, if insufficiencies via collaboration between the site and library textbook services is not occurring, because my principal has multiple times spoken to them, and they continue to tell us that our students don't deserve those materials. And so I'm asking you, as board members, and again, reminding you that our students come from every single area in this district, that you do what's best for our students, and you cannot accept this resolution. You cannot say that you agree that there is 100% materials for all students when I'm telling you, and another teacher has told you from our school, that they do not exist for us. Thank you.
I appreciate all the work that you guys did in going through and following the procedure that is set forth for you, I assume by the district in its wisdom, to determine what sufficient means. Just point out, sufficient means enough. It means adequate. I teach at a school where the book supply is inadequate, and while there might be enough books, enough weight to load these kids down and hurt them on their way home, the books themselves are woefully inadequate. We should not be teaching out of 20-year-old books for history. We should not be teaching out of books that don't know that Sudan has been split into two countries. Like, we shouldn't be teaching from textbooks that are like that, and I'm glad that we're finally getting around to doing it. It's only been a literal generation. You consulted one-quarter of the folks out there. That's not an adequate consultation when three-quarters, and you have teachers actually telling you, I am sitting here in front of you, telling you that these books are aged, these books are falling apart, and that's for the programs that are still in existence, never mind the ones that have died. We've been repairing those books the entirety of the program. But while you might have enough books technically on a ledger somewhere, you don't have enough good books that actually do the job and are adequate. And let's say that I do get a whole bunch of new books by the eighth week, a whole new book. When was I supposed to have gone through that, annotated it, come up with lessons? Do I do it over the weekend for free? Do I do it instead of teaching my students out of these old textbooks that I've had to come up with all kinds of other resources for, to supplement, because it's been 20 years? Adequate, enough. Enough is enough. This is not enough.
Do we have any additional public speakers, Mr. Heath? All right. Do we have any board comments or questions? Member Villa?
So based off the information that I see on page six of this report, you said that you, these are the school sites that we looked at. This is what I'm struggling with, with this one, is the recommendation in the resolution certifies that each student has what they need, and on page seven, it says 100%. So that, those two conflicting data, and I know that you said that the Williams Review, you only need to really do one for, but we can't, we can't say 100% of schools if we've only looked at these school sites. Am I, I just want to make sure that that, because we can't say that. What about the other schools that maybe, we know, I am hearing from our teachers tonight too, but just the information here, these aren't 100% of our schools and are 100% of our students?
Okay. So maybe what, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question, and...
But is that, is that correct, though, that these were the only school sites that were visited?
I can only verify that 100% of the schools that we checked have sufficient textbooks.
Got it.
That's all I can verify, because those are the schools that I personally went to.
Okay.
And those are the schools that I personally had contact with.
I know this is a lot of work, so I understand.
It is, but that's, I mean, that's part of the job, and that's fine. I just, I, I don't, I mean, SCOWI comes up with the list, and then we check those sites.
Got it.
There are procedures if schools and parents are concerned, there are procedures for them to file complaints. And then there's things that happen after that that I'm not in any way in control over.
Yeah.
SCOWI sends me a list and says, "Here's your, here's your Williams sites for this year," and then I notify those principals and office managers and librarians, if they have one.
Right. Okay.
That's all, those are the only sites that we check.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So that's all, in regards to this, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Member Garcia?
Thank you for that distinction, because it's 100% of the schools that were identified by SCOWI, or by a county office of education, not 100% of all the schools in a district.
Right.
And a lot of that is driven by state law, so I get that there's not, you just end up with a list of what you have to check.
Yes.
I am interested, though, and this is probably not Williams, right? I am interested in learning a little bit more about how we go about planning for future updates and adoptions of textbooks. We're hearing that we have a lot of old textbooks. So while this puts us in compliance that all our kids have textbooks, they have adequate number of textbooks, it doesn't necessarily say like the quality of the textbook, right?
100% agree.
It doesn't necessarily say, okay, these are like high-quality, very recent textbooks. It's just, you have a textbook. So I'm just wondering, what is the process in terms of the district identifying sort of what's next in the queue? Or maybe, I want to know what are the three high-priority textbooks that need to be adopted district-wide, right? Because those are things you need a plan for. So, okay.
So right now, we are, like I said earlier, we're in the middle of a K-12 History/Social Sciences adoption, so that is a long overdue, as was stated absolutely legitimately in the public comment. Our history textbooks, some of them are 1998. So right now, we're in the middle of that adoption, and then the next priority is a World Languages adoption. And then we're also, in addition to the K-12 History/Social Sciences adoption, there's also an AP History/Social Sciences adoption, which also includes psychology in both general education and AP. So, yeah, I hope that answers your question.
No, it is very helpful. I know all this work is happening. I just, I like to think through a few steps ahead, just so that I know what's on the radar, because I know we have opportunity to invest in these types of updates, right? Especially now with, you know, quite a bit of one-time funds. These are the types of things that we hear are, should be looked at for, for, you know, just updating the textbook. So thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you for answering my questions and, you know, recognizing the public comment also that there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of need to... There's a lot of need to, there are just a lot of needs to be met, and just hearing that the work is already started. So, thank you for that.
All right. Student members in.
I was just going to bounce off of that because I do remember when I was in sixth grade, I thought all of my descendants was dead, like I was dead. Like, we were taught, like, that my people were dead because in those textbooks, they, the word, the way they were framed and the way stuff was framed, it wasn't really right. And so we were kind of given misinformation, and it wasn't really the best. And then also, I want to go back to when they said 100%. I saw, like, people, students, like, not have textbooks and, like, teachers scavenging around, seeing, like, if other teachers have extra textbooks, and it's like, do we really have those textbooks or were the kids just really lying? Like, you can never really know if you're just only checking for, like, half, what? Four and a half of the...
Quarter of it.
Oh, yeah, the quarter of the schools. So, it would be nice if we can, I know it's a lot of work, but if there was like a way we could check the majority because, like I always said, there was teachers scavenging for textbooks for their students, and then, I know there's a few students that were like, they don't even have their books, and it's like, I wish they would have, like, the materials they could.
Can I address that? So, I probably don't need the mic. So, we depend on site administrators to contact LTS about textbook shortages. So if there's, if there are students who don't have textbooks, we depend on them contacting us, saying, you know, we have 40 more kids enrolled in math two this year than we did last year, we need to get 40 more textbooks. We send out inventory lists in, that are due by, like, February and March for the following school year. So we really try and be proactive about making sure we have textbooks where they should be. So if teachers are scrambling, that's not good. That's not what we want to have happen. We want students to have access to textbooks. Well, we want them to have access to good textbooks. But if we don't know about it, we can't send them to them. So the only reason that we would maybe not send social studies textbooks to somebody is because we don't have any, like that, but that's a different issue. So does that make sense? Like, if we don't know that they're missing textbooks, we can't send them. And, yeah, I mean, we, we depend on site administrators and librarians to make sure that the classrooms have what they need, particularly at sites where we are not checking those sites. So, does that answer your question? Okay.
Member Murawski?
Thank you, and thanks for the discussion, colleagues. Just a couple of points here that I wanted to discuss. So we're, this certification, we're required to adopt this per the statute and the, and we're adopting this according to the process that has been laid out. So, just in terms of like what we're, what we're looking at today, so I hope everyone is comfortable doing that. If we, if we're not satisfied with the process as a board, you know, that's on us, I think, to discuss maybe at a future meeting, to see if we want to, you know, upgrade the process to cast a wider net, but that's certainly something that we can, we can think about. And also, in terms of, you know, do we, do we have, have or consider a policy on how long is too long, right? Especially for something as critical as the history and social science. I am beyond thrilled that we're, that we're doing this work. It's been a personal priority of mine. It's so critical and such a disservice to, you know, students like Board Member McGurk to, to be faced with that. So, just thrilled that we're, that we're doing that work and prioritizing our funds that way. And I, just lastly, I, I don't know if there's someone here tonight who can address the kind of policies for instructional materials at CAPSITY, as was brought up, but if there's not, then perhaps you can get back to the board on, on just what that, what that looks like and, you know, so we can address any, anything we need to. Thank you.
Member Rhodes?
I was just seconding what Member Murawski was saying about checking in on CAPSITY and what are the policies and, and why or how that might have happened. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, board members. And I want to echo what Member Murawski was mentioning in terms of process and then board direction and guidance on additional information that we could provide and should provide at these types of requests for action from the board. And in this case, what I will commit to doing is making sure that we inform the board and also come back to our board in open session and give greater clarity to you and to our community about textbook adoption schedules moving forward as opposed to just have it part of a discussion for a resolution you deserve, our community deserves, our teachers, our staff deserve, to know where we stand in terms of textbook adoption moving forward, what's coming up, how long has it been. I know that information is there. I want to make sure that you and our community knows how much we're planning to invest in those purchases, so we will commit to provide that to you in the form of a board communication and also come back and provide an update as part of a future board meeting very soon.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I just want to say that I appreciate all of our, my colleagues' comments and concerns, and I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I also appreciate the teachers that came out to speak tonight. And definitely, I'm, I'm looking forward to future conversations of what we can do to help and kind of direction that we can give. I do just want to point out, I, because I struggled with 100% as well, and I did, I pulled the resolution, and the resolution does not say 100%. The resolution says the definition of sufficient textbook and instructional materials. So, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out to my colleagues. All right. With that, I will ask for a motion of action. All right. I have a motion. Second. All right. Student preferential vote.
All right. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Item 10.0, communications. Item 10.1, employee organization reports, SCTA. We've got 15 minutes on the clock, please.
I'm David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association, and when I conclude my remarks, Ingrid Hutchins is going to take some of our time. Here we are. It's only five days until the election. And because it's election season, there are incumbents trying to rewrite the history of the highly inaccurate and damaging budgetary projections that have plagued the district during the past several years, really traumatized the community. It seemed like a good time to once again present several facts about SacCity's recent financial history. In August 2018, the Sacramento County Office of Education rejected the SacCity's budget for the first time in SCUSD and SCOE history. Many in the community will remember that the superintendent, with the full support of the school board and SCOE, falsely told the community over and over that our district was months or even weeks away from fiscal insolvency, and the only solution was immediate and massive cuts in teacher compensation. It was false then, and it's false now, even though many of you still cling to a similar narrative, even as it's easily disproved with the facts. Some, including incumbents running for reelection now, claim that the district's finances are more stable, but only because of the additional COVID funds provided to the district by the state and federal governments. That narrative is also false. Here once again are the facts. In 12 of the last 13 years, looking at the unrestricted revenues and expenses and excluding COVID funds and one-time funds, the district has operated with a surplus 12 out of the last 13 years, including 2018, 19, 1920, 2021, 2122. Every one of the four years that ended with a surplus after the superintendent repeatedly and falsely told the public that SacCity was on the brink of insolvency. In 2018, 19, when Superintendent Aguilar claimed the district was months away from fiscal insolvency, the district ran a surplus of $857,000. In 1920, again, another surplus, this time $23.5 million. In 2021, another surplus, this time $19 million. In 2122, again, another surplus, this time a whopping $44 million. By the way, adding to the reserve fund, reserve fund every year by definition is a structural surplus. Contrary to what have, some have asserted, the district never had to dip into the reserve funds to cover expenses except for one year. That was 2017, 18, when the superintendent cashed out $6 million in vacation pay for top-paid administrators unbudgeted, added administrative positions that were unbudgeted, and other unbudgeted expenses. In addition, we recently discovered when the district finally provided information we have been requesting for months, that the district's finances would have been even stronger, except that the superintendent chose to unnecessarily increase voluntary district contributions to a insurance trust fund. $34 million over the last four years, an additional $34 million that could have been spent in our classrooms, where our students need it most. Those additional voluntary contributions were never disclosed, evidently because it didn't fit the narrative that the district was on the brink of insolvency. One other fact that we should note is that the district's robust financial status includes writing off $47 million in penalties because this board accepted the superintendent's decision to stop working with us to add back the days lost because you forced a strike and then decided to close the schools. A strike forced by demanding that teachers take a $10,000 pay cut in the midst of a teacher shortage. So, whatever the outcome next Tuesday, we are hopeful that the district leadership will accept the reality that that district is in fact in the best financial position it has ever been in its history and will work with us to address the teacher shortage and make sure every student has a teacher in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the rest of that time. Before I address you with what I have written, I just want to point out that the reason I feel the need to speak of, about how I feel as a teacher who works for your district is because you all just agreed to a resolution and you thought, well, because it doesn't say 100%, it's good. It says each pupil. What does each pupil mean? Doesn't that mean every single student? I just told you that every single student does not have materials. I came into you with my expertise in the classroom, and I was ignored over other people in the district. And this is what I see time and time again. I am a 22-year employee of this district. So my, my tenure in this district is longer than all of yours, and I'm trying to give you some of my expertise. I don't have anything to gain by coming here tonight. I live far away. And because we don't have a Zoom option, I have to drive half an hour here and then afterwards, half an hour home, so I'm taking an hour of my time just to commute here to speak to you. And I do really expect that maybe you take that to heart. So these, the, the statement I want to make, I just wanted to preface with that so you understand where I'm coming from. Everyone has what psychologists call the illusion of explanatory depth. In simple terms, you simply don't know what you don't know. Unfortunately, district leadership doesn't recognize the existence of these gaps in their knowledge, so they refuse to collaborate with those who have a better understanding of what happens in the classroom and what our students actually need. The system that you all repeatedly describe as inequitable by design is one that you will never disrupt because you insist on perpetuating it. If you truly want to disrupt the system, the work begins today. Work in collaboration with district employees and not just those who work at Serna Center. Treat teachers as professionals. Listen to us when we have, when we voice our concerns. Value our inputs and acknowledge our expertise. You will never create a great educational system through mandates. You need to recognize that you don't know everything that occurs in our classrooms. Start leaning into our expertise, start listening to the teachers, and understand that we are not a problem that you have to overcome. We are here to work with you, and I do not ever get that feeling back in return. I feel like the enemy, and I shouldn't have to feel that way. I don't do this job for, you know, accolades. I do this job because I love my students. I stay in this district because I love our community. And so when I get that pushback, that, that feeling that you don't care or that you think I'm here for some sort of nefarious reasons, when you start to say things about the, the union, it, it's so confusing to me because I don't know a teacher who's not here for pure reasons. I don't know one teacher who's not here to make things better for our students. And that's what I thought the board was here for as well. That's what I thought the superintendent was here for as well. And I would love for us to get past whatever this is, and you start to understand that we all have something to give, we all have something to add to this, and instead of directing all the time, start asking us. We have a lot of crucial information that would make this so much better, and I really wish that we could get to that point. Thank you.
SEIU? TCS? Teamsters? UPE? All right. 10.2, district advisory committees, the community advisory committee? District English learner advisory committee? Local control accountability plan, parent advisory committee? Welcome. Let's just say, welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to be back. Frank DeYoung, proudly representing Area 5, I might say. And, Terrence, would you like to introduce yourself? I know they know who you are.
I'm Terrence Gladney. I represent Area 7.
So, the reality is, we really don't have anything to report this evening because, well, we haven't met. We will be meeting Monday night. That is going to present a challenge for the committee. As the senior member on the committee, I hate to say it, by age and tenure, normally we would have had three, maybe five meetings by now. And so with the holidays coming, we're going to be really pressed after the first of the year to pull the things together that we need to be pulling together to be, in order to give this board the kind of recommendations that we would like to give you. So it's going to be a challenge. I think we're up for it, but I mean, we have all the normal challenges. We have new members who are going to have a lot of learning curves. We have existing members that are a little frustrated right now because we haven't met, and we're used to hitting the ground running after June. So, that's about as much as I have to say. I just want to make you all aware of that, what our challenges are going to be going forward.
Yeah. I'll just add that the best way we can support the LCAP as a whole and the LCFF process within the district is to empower our school sites. Frank is a stalwart at getting out in the Area 5 community. I'm very present in a lot of local school sites as well. The infrastructure there is not where it should be, and it's inadequate, it's inadequate to, to support a healthy LCAP and a healthy process where local school sites are represented thoroughly and, and wholeheartedly and, and really with the integrity that they should be. It should not be a top-down approach, and, and we truly do need to define what's local, how local are we going to make our LCAP and our process? How much voice do school sites have? And really, like, are school site councils and SIPSA's really representative of the entire school site communities that we, that we're supposed to represent?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Student Advisory Council?
Yeah. I think all I have to update is what we're working on right now. So, we're working on trying to have, I want to say, yeah, unisex bathrooms for all schools, so non-binary kids and kids who don't feel really comfortable using quote-unquote "normal bathrooms" can use whatever they feel like it. And then, also, one more. I can't think of it right now. I can't think of it right now.
All right. African-American Advisory Board. All right. 10.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, President Pritchett, and good evening to everyone. I want to start by discussing one of the topics that several public commenters did mention related to safety of our students and our staff, which is of course a top priority in light of recent incidents at and near some of our schools. Last month, we had a security breach at JFK High School that many of you heard about. Less than 10 minutes before dismissal time, the gates were opened to prepare for the egress of students. And during that brief window of time, several adults were able to trespass onto our campus to harm a student. This was a planned event in which adults were summoned to the campus in a coordinated action, and I very much understand that it was very frightening and chaotic and wish to commend Principal Reggie Brown and all of his staff who were able to detain two of the individuals and coordinate still an orderly release of students floor by floor and building by building. A week earlier, as you heard as well this evening, there was a shooting directly across the street from Hiram Johnson High School after our student dismissal time as well. We are incredibly fortunate that no students or staff were harmed in the senseless violence. And again, I also want to recognize the bravery and swift actions of our site leadership and all of the staff who brought students back inside from the parking lot for safety until the scene was cleared by law enforcement. And just last week, we heard the reports of students being robbed by men in Ski Mass not far from CK McClatchy as well. Principal Andre Egan made sure her families knew of these incidents and had sound safety advice traveling to and from school. Our Safe Schools Office is working with District Facilities Team to identify both short-term and we do have long-term plans for improving safety at all of our campuses, but the short-term is what matters right now, and we will be presenting to the board and to our community some of those recommendations very soon. Inside the classroom, the release of the state's Smarter Balance test scores last month confirmed what all of us who work statewide in public education already knew. COVID certainly impacted measurable learning loss for our students. Our teachers and our administrators have continued to work to mitigate these effects, of course, even before the return to in-person instruction last year. Learning loss has occurred across all demographics, and these results only shine a brighter light on the problem of learning gaps. Our black and brown students and English learners have fallen further behind, and that, of course, is unacceptable. I also want to make sure that our community is aware, and our board, I know, has been promoting this. Tuesday of this week was the launch of our high school specialty program application window, which will be open through Wednesday, November 30. This is an opportunity for families and students to apply for enrollment in a high school specialty program for the 23-24 school year based on availability. This process is being done entirely online. I encourage families to visit our website at scusd.edu and scroll down the homepage to the large link to our specialty programs. This year, Sac City has a new optional research tool to make it easier for families to learn about the 31 different specialty programs available throughout our district and choose the right one for their student through school mint. I also, and you heard it earlier, speaking of our high school opportunities, we've had a great deal of athletic success to share this year. Last Friday, a few of us, I know President Pritchett, of course, had the pleasure of watching the Rosemont community line up along Kiefer Boulevard for the Rosemont Homecoming Parade, which hadn't happened in some time. Later that night, Rosemont was able to play their first game this season on their brand-new athletic field. This week, Rosemont will travel tomorrow, actually, to Ripon for the first round of the CIF San Joaquin Football Playoffs. Joining them in the playoffs this year is the league co-champion, Hiram Johnson, who has a big game, as you heard earlier, from Mr. Voskis against Algrove on Friday night as well. Hiram Johnson is not our only league champion this fall. The JFK High School's girls' golf team won the Metro League Championship. This year's team earned four All Metro League awards and were led by Metro League Player of the Year, Makina Tsui. We also have some recognition to share for our coaches. Last month, you may have heard two coaches at CK McClatchy were honored as 2022 CIF San Joaquin Coaches of the Year, Mike Dinkochea for baseball and Julie Watkins for cross-country. Congratulations for the prestigious honor, and thank you for all your work to lead and mentor our student athletes. And finally, earlier today, many of you board members, starting with Member Murawski, of course, in her area, Members Villa, Members Rhodes, and Member Wu, were all with us at CK McClatchy, where we had an Achieve UC College Fair event. We were joined by Chancellor May, many of our elected officials, many of our students. There was an assembly, of course. There was a college fair. It was a wonderful way to showcase the work we've been doing as a district to better prepare our students academically and financially to attend one of the 10 or the nine general UC campuses, if that's in their plans. It was an opportunity for students to meet with college recruiters, admissions officials, financial aid representatives, to learn more about choosing a school that will support their goals. I do want to particularly thank Chancellor May from UC Davis and UC President Michael Drake for choosing McClatchy for this special event. And of course, we all know that UC President Michael Drake is one of the notable alums from CK McClatchy. He couldn't be here this evening, or he couldn't be here this morning with us, but nevertheless, we will make sure to get back to him as we wanted to present him some tokens of our appreciation as well. Thank you, President Pritchett.
Thank you. All right. Item 10.4, President's Report. I just want to give a huge shout out to Rosemont High School and their Rosemont Community Parade that they had for their homecoming. It's one of the jewels of the community, and when we say "community," it really is everybody involved, all the elementary schools in the area, Golden Empire, James Marshall Sequoia, and Einstein alongside with the Rosemont students marched proudly down Kiefer Boulevard, really showing their pride for their community. So just huge shout out to everyone that made that happen, the staff and the students. So thank you. 10.5, student member report.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Item 10.6, information sharing by board members. Member Garcia.
I just have one brief share. I think it was last week, we had a press conference near Phoebe Hurst Elementary School in partnership with the Assembly Member Kevin McCarty and Council Member Jeff Harris to recognize funds that are going to be awarded, $5 million from the state and $1 million from the city, to do a road diet on Folsom Boulevard between 58th Street and 67th. And this is to address the horrific tragedy that happened there earlier this year with one of our parents at Phoebe Hurst was killed at the intersection of Folsom and 60th. So it's really in an effort to reduce the lanes from four lanes to two and also to install some bike lanes. I think this project probably won't get done until, I think, the summer of 2024, but, you know, there'll be some work, you know, reaching out to district staff as well as the community at Phoebe over that time in order to inform, just sort of, just have some community meetings and also update the community as to what some of the designs might be or that are being proposed. I also want to recognize that the district also did some work on the parking lot in order to reroute the traffic over the summer, and that's already been a big improvement. But it's just a reflection of multiple government entities coming together, pulling in resources, limited resources, to just have a bigger impact in increasing pedestrian safety for not only the school but also for the community at large. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Murawski.
Thank you. Just wanted to take the opportunity to make sure all of my colleagues know and our community knows about the Wide Open Walls mural event and community fair. It's November 19 at Bret Hart. There are going to be a lot of very cool murals painted. There will be free food, books, bike repairs, Thanksgiving ingredients, bounce house, COVID testing, you name it, we've got it. It's going to be a lot of fun, live music. And last but not least, Crispin, the SCUSD mascot, will be in the house. So November 19, 10 to 1. Please come out, should be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Member Rhodes.
Echoing Member Murawski, come out to Bret Hart. I'm actually looking forward to Bret Hart actually getting these murals. Obviously, it was my elementary school, and so I have great memories of the big tree that's falling off of the tree, actually, or the soccer fields or the baseball diamond, all of those things. Bret Hart Children's Center, scraping my knee on the blacktop, still have the scar. Like, this school is amazing, and I'm happy that you guys are doing at that school, and I can't wait to see it. So please come out, all of us, from everywhere, just come out, it'd be great.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. All right. Item 11.0, consent agenda. Do we have any public comment? Do you have public comment? Yeah, you can fill out a card.
Yeah, he did not fill out a card, but that's fine.
Okay, we'll get a card filled out for you.
Definitely, before I leave. Real quick, just looking at the POs and financials, I saw a large number of individual line items for Johnson Controls for HVAC, and it listed the funding source as in-person instruction funding. So I was just wondering if there could be at some point, hopefully so maybe in the facilities report, just some articulation as to if that's connected to the MIR filters, but also how it directly connects to student outcomes, positive, hopefully, now and in the future. I saw a special education item around speech pathology. And recently, having listened to a community member talk about their IEP process, I learned that speech as a service, even though if it's in an IEP, it doesn't carry over into summer unless it's requested by that individual family. I'm not going to allude to why that may be the case, but if it's in their IEP and they're a student, whether in the summer or any term, I would imagine that our process and our policy would be to keep it there, and it shouldn't be anything that's opt-in if that's in the best interest of students, especially sped students. And to that point as well, I believe that the priority factor in determining where a high school student lands if they're in special education is whether or not they have to be on a bus. I don't know if that aligns with what's in the best interest of students. I see so many reimbursements with parents, you know, driving their own kids and everything, so we need to just look a lot closer at that. And then lastly, it was brought up before, that we are now contracting with Mr. Basio, and whether or not it's technically a conflict of interest when someone is uplifted in this space and being called the heart of the district, and they were actual staff, and then we, on consent, pass a contract with them individually, and their law firm is named in their individual name. I would love for that to be pulled and discussed outside of consent because I think their community, you know, should understand why that's the process, just for transparency, to make sure that everything is on the up and up. I don't think it's something that should be included in consent. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion for consent? All right, I have a motion, a second student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Garcia. Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Wu.
All right. Item 12.0, business and financial information reports received. Our item 13.0, future board meetings in date are November 17 and December 15. With that, can I get a motion for adjournment? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Good evening.